Article 2 in the warrant reads as follows: To see if the town will vote to inform Selectman Tom Dubreal that the town has lost confidence in his ability to perform in his role as Dalton Selectman for reasons regarding some or all of the following. Selectman Tom Dubreal is routinely and prepared to comprehend, discuss, or vote on the town's business at select board meetings. When Selectman Tom Dubreal has accepted responsibility to follow up or take action on town business, Dubreal routinely fails to deliver a result. Selectman Tom Dubreal risks significant legal expenses to the town by refusing to respond and/or delaying response to legal right-to-know requests. Selectman Tom Dubreal routinely abstains from voting on motions before the select board. Selectman Tom Dubreal championed the replacement of the town's legal firm with a new legal firm that quickly exceeded the town's annual budget for legal expenses addressing his issues. Do I have a motion to consider this article? And is that motion seconded by anyone?
Second.
Second.
Arianna Pashan, Dalton.
Okay, the motion to consider the article is approved. Will someone be representing the petition or someone representing the petition be presenting on the article?
I will.
Hello, I'm Amanda Devino. Can you push the button? Hello, Mandy Devino, 511 Simons Road in Dalton. Thank you all for coming out tonight for the special town meeting. I'm speaking to the vote of no confidence on Mr. Dubreal. It has become necessary to confront the violations that have occurred in his tenure as a select board member. The ethical behavior of all public officials is of significant concern to us taxpayers. Elected officials act on behalf of us, their constituents, and should have a good understanding of state laws, avoid conflicts of interest, properly use authority, treat people fairly, follow through with assignments, and be trustworthy. It should be obvious that if one decides to campaign, become elected, and then serve as a select board member, that they have some previous experience or will quickly gain that knowledge and skills necessary to fulfill the position. I do not expect anyone to know everything as there is always a learning curve. I do, however, expect them to have the ability to come prepared to a meeting and discuss town business. On too many occasions, Mr. Dubreal has not had his notes available at a meeting or claims he did not receive the information for the meeting beforehand, even though the other board members did. Training is supplied for all Dalton Select Board members at the cost of the town through the New Hampshire Municipal Association. This is money well spent to help support the newly-elected select board member. The newly-elected select board member learns about the right-to-know law, RSA Chapter 91A. The purpose of this chapter is to ensure both the greatest possible public access to the actions, discussions, and records of all public bodies and their accountability to the people. Denying or delaying access to public information is a violation and could harm the town in legal actions and erodes the trust of the public. We, as taxpayers, could be flipping the bill for a select board member's ignorance of RSA 91A. Mr. Dubreal has denied and/or delayed requests to his constituents on several occasions, myself being one of them. This should be a red flag to every Dalton resident. It is our right to have access to this information to stay properly informed about our town government. RSA 91A also covers public meetings. Taking a meeting into non-public for the discussion of public topics takes away our rights. It is unethical and in violation of the law, which puts the town at risk again for legal action. Mr. Dubreal followed through with a motion to discuss the hiring of a new town legal counsel in a non-public session, even though it was brought to his attention that this was a violation. As a result, the public was not privy to any discussion or information until the meeting minutes were unsealed. His reasoning for changing legal firms was unsubstantial and lacked reasoning. The public never had a chance to ask questions. As you will hear from the other residents, this decision is costing us taxpayers dearly. Select board members maintain access to New Hampshire Municipal Association, or NHMA, which the town taxpayers pay for. Select board members can contact them for questions, and not utilizing the service is a waste of money. NHMA also publishes a book, Knowing the Territory, which is provided to each board member. Many questions can be answered by reading the book, contacting NHMA, asking more tenured members or employees for guidance before seeking expensive legal counsel. Unfortunately, Mr. Dubreal has sought out guidance first through legal counsel more often than not and has cost the taxpayers money on questions that could have been answered by NHMA or other resources available to him. Mr. Dubreal also volunteered to collect data for the transfer station in January of 2024. These numbers are crucial in understanding profit-loss from the transfer station. As the year went on, in meeting minutes, you can see where he failed to deliver the necessary information. Select Board Member Joe Beth Dudley was able to collect the data within a few days. Why was Mr. Dubreal not able to accomplish his task in 10 months? Understanding how meeting minutes work is part of the responsibilities of board members. Mr. Dubreal has been on the select board for almost two years and still does not have a good comprehension of how meeting minutes work. At the November 21st, 2024 working meeting, neither he or Select Board Member Mr. Moore understood that accepting meeting minutes is accepting what was discussed and not agreeing with the topics discussed. Then, by not approving the minutes, calling for the non-public to be sealed, the minutes were accessible and read by the public. When town folks knew of the contents, they were upset when told the minutes were never sealed because they refused to sign the meeting minutes. How many times has he abstained from meeting minutes because of this thinking? Or was it due to a conflict of interest? We never know because we never get a reason for it. Abstaining from approving meeting minutes is not a violation, but it would be helpful to understand why our elected official abstains from several meeting minutes between March and October until it was brought to his attention. He has created a hostile working environment in which he has been notified. If this behavior is allowed to continue, he once again puts the town at risk for illegal action. The town of Dalton has attracted the attention of the New Hampshire Right-to-Know organizations. They have been reviewing meeting minutes and videos and have identified several red flags, again, that could lead to legal challenges for the town. Please understand that these issues need to be addressed, or the town and the taxpayers will be the ones to pay for his mistakes. A yes vote sends a message that we are not going to continue to allow our rights to be French upon by an elected official. Thank you for your time.
This article is now open for floor debate.
Christina Ennis, 541 Simons Road. I'm here to speak on two things. The alarming number of hours our select board has at the request of Tom Dubreal consulted legal counsel and about Tom's lack of response to right-to-know requests. As of yesterday, our town has been invoiced for almost $17,000 in legal fees for 2024, and it is estimated there will be another $10,000 worth of invoices through December for a total of $26,000 for the year. As a comparison, our legal fees in 2023 totaled $8,700. We're looking at almost a $20,000 increase, of which a significant amount came from Tom insisting on consulting legal when calling New Hampshire Municipal Association or just looking up RSA's could have answered his questions. Over $1,800 were spent on legal fees regarding right-to-know requests, of which I submitted two. The first was about the August 6 meeting that Joe Beth had warned the select board was illegally posted as a non-public meeting and should be canceled. Tom and Eric posted it anyhow, and just 45 minutes before the posted meeting was to occur, Tom took down the meeting post without putting up a notice that the meeting was canceled, thus leaving over 30 residents of Dalton waiting at the municipal building. On August 7th, I submitted a right-to-know request to the select board asking for all correspondence about that meeting, and there was no response from Mr. Dubreal. The same meeting was again posted this time as a public meeting scheduled on August 19th and then canceled, and again on August 21. As many people had rearranged their schedule a second and then a third time, I was curious as to why these last-minute cancellations were occurring, and I submitted a right-to-know request asking for all correspondence between the select board members at these meetings or about these meetings. Again, no response from Tom. On November 1st, after the select board had been put on notice and threatened with a possible lawsuit by another town member for lack of response, I finally got a response from Tom that I deem insufficient. Fearing that Tom will again send it to legal, I decided to spare the town additional fees, and so I'm no longer pursuing the answers. Although Tom should be well aware of RSA 91A1 and his obligation to answer right-to-know requests, he surprisingly has consulted the town's legal team for about five requests since July and incurred at least $1,817 in expenses to the town for eight hours of a lawyer's time. Not only has Tom put the town at risk for lawsuits by not answering simple right-to-know requests, but has unnecessarily spent town funds consulting about a perfectly clear law. In addition, not once, not twice...
Are you about done?
I am. Not once, not twice, but three times, Tom stated in select board meetings that my right-to-know request constituted harassment. I have a funny feeling our town's legal counsel didn't agree with him, and I know that our state laws don't.
Hamcath and Harriman Road. This is a waste of money by having this special town meeting to just humiliate and berate a select man. If you really don't want him in there, then if he runs again, don't vote for him. Otherwise, this is a waste of our time and our money. And who's to say what exactly did get done with those right-to-knows? If someone shives as much information as they have, that's all they can do. Why try squeezing more blood for morale?
We're not doing applause on anything tonight. Anybody else have anything to say? Again, so we can wrap this up as quickly as possible. If other people are pointing on saying things, please queue in line.
Gordon Jelf, 13, Ristrolic. As I said earlier, my concern is citizen of Dalton. I'm concerned over the actions and lack of leadership in Mr. Dubreal. I'm quoting from Town of Dalton Board of Selectment's Rules and Procedures dated June 2019. Specifically, Section 4 entitled, "Conduct with Other Selectmen, the Public and Staff." Subsection B. 2, "Selectmen will treat all staff as professionals." Mr. Dubreal has violated that rule as evidenced by the town clerk advising the select board and Mr. Dubreal's creating a hostile work environment through his dealings with the town clerk. The specifics of which should not be discussed in the open forum. Additionally, Section 4 C. 5 requires select board members to treat with respect the rights of all members. Mr. Dubreal has violated this procedure by making comments at public board meetings in which he belittled and ridiculed another board member. For these offenses, and for the good of Dalton, a vote of no confidence is warranted by Mr. Dubreal's actions. Thank you.
Mandy Devino, 511 Simons Road. I just wanted to answer Pam's question about what was used with the right-to-knows. I was able to gather information and ask questions in regards to the $25,000 of legal fees that Casella was offering to pay. I thought that my questions were reasonable, asking for prorated payment for any expenses that had been occurred before this agreement was signed. And I don't think it was out of the question to ask for that information, and it was withheld from me for several weeks.
Robin Peal, 40, Simons Road. I am floored to see these ridiculous accusations against Selectman Tom Dubreal. There is nothing but biased, baseless, cheap shots at a public servant. The warrant claims that Tom Dubreal is not ready to comprehend subject said meetings, and I have even seen attacks on Tom being called names like moron and slob. This is no place in town politics. Tom has openly stated that he has dyslexia. I myself have the same disability, and I am disgusted at the attack on his disability and the statement that he is not ready to comprehend subject matter. The thing that dyslexia is that it makes you slow down, take more time to think about before you react, and before you, to make sure you understand what you're talking about before you sign anything or say anything. That is a problem with dyslexia, but it makes you think. I am a resident of Dalton. I submitted a right-to-know request on July 30th, 2023, for two items. I still have not gotten these documents today. I have not gotten them. So if you want to talk about right-to-knows, there's one there, and I have another one too that I haven't gotten back in 2023, too. And I guess you're not supposed to say names as to who was on the chair and who they went to. My right-to-know was ignored, but the response from the selectmen, one of them, was I can go blank for myself. And that was right on the select board's name. My point in this is what I have witnessed from Tom Dubreal is not refusal to respond or fulfill the right-to-knows as previous selectmen have done. Tom took his time, and it takes his time before he reacts to make sure he's doing it legal and there won't be any court case. And I have seen complaints against Tom. I've heard them, and I also know everybody's saying that he's causing the town legal, but actually, so is the planning board, from what I hear, and I even heard it in the selectman's office. So if we're gonna throw stones, we're gonna throw mud, we're gonna throw it at all the different offices here. And as far as I'm concerned, Tom Dubreal is doing everything that we expected of a select man. So in my opinion, let's not throw mud if we have mud that could be thrown at you, too.
Jennifer Green, 32, Big Hill Road, Dalton. So I just wanted to speak to the meeting minutes. I have attended more than half of the select board meetings in the town. And then the ones that I don't attend because of work, I look for the meeting minutes in order to review them, or, and if those aren't available, I watch the videos that are posted so that I can review them myself. And regularly, Tom does not approve the meeting minutes, and often, those meeting minutes have to be posted as drafts, so they're not official, but you can review them as a draft. The reason meeting minutes are so important is it's a record of what's happening within the town, and they need to be available to townspeople to review, especially if you can't make it to those meetings. And I have asked Tom multiple times why he is not approving or signing these meeting minutes. And the response that I get on two occasions where they're not accurate. And when I receive that response, I ask for him to please detail inaccuracies because there's a lot of innuendos around things not being done accurately or false statements. And he stated at that time there were too many, and he couldn't articulate it, and he needed time, which I would absolutely agree with. If you are presented with something, sometimes we need extra time to get those thoughts together. I asked if he could bring to the board the next meeting all of the concerns and the inaccuracies of the meeting minutes, and his response was, I hope so. At that next meeting, when I asked for those meeting minutes and if he could articulate the inaccuracies of those meeting minutes, he could not and refused to answer me. This has happened multiple times. More than half of the times with the meeting minutes. The problem is, if you can't answer the inaccuracies, if you can't articulate what is wrong with it and why you're not voting, it leaves up to everyone else watching imagination. And the innuendos that there are things that are nefarious that are happening behind the scenes is left open for interpretation, and that is a problem. You continue to do the same thing. You continue to abstain from voting and say that you're right, and you continue to not let anybody know why you're not doing this, and that leaves it open for interpretation, and it's a problem.
People speaking, please remember to speak to the moderator and not to anyone else in the room.
Christina Fantonis, 36, Dalton Road. I just wanted to say, after listening to everybody, how disgusted I am how they insulted Tom. We voted Tom in for a reason. If nobody likes the job he's doing, and when he comes up to vote, they do not vote for him, but for someone else. As far as these positions for towns, this isn't the big city. This is not how it works here in small towns. These positions are for everyday people. There is training offered if needed. So for someone to come up here and say that we need someone with more experience or some kind of background, that's not how this works. This is locals, everyday people who want to run and care about their town. To come up here and degrade him like they did is disgusting. And I think everyone should vote no on this. We voted him in. We want him on the select board. Bottom line. This witch hunt needs to stop. I have witnessed the exact opposite at town meetings. More people should attend them and see because the hostile environment is not coming from Tom Dubreal. I've seen it come from the clerk and other select board members towards him. I have seen how he's in a hostile environment, if anything. He is not causing the hostile environment. The people around him are. And I couldn't believe the disrespect towards him when I attended meetings. People should attend them more, and we do have videos because people record them, all the meetings. And if they seen even half of them, they would be disgusted as well. I think this witch hunt needs to end, and we need to vote no.
Kathleen Fountain, 8, Dalton. I'd like to ask the moderator to call for a vote if everybody has spoken. Okay?
So this is the last person in line before we call for that vote.
This meeting has been brought up to try to get Tom out of office so he cannot continue to negotiate with Casella. They want to kick this can down the road. They do not want to get anything done. And it's time that we stop this. The town voted Tom in for a reason. Tom voted Eric in for a reason. They want things done. They're tired of getting things kicked down the road and nothing done.
All right, we've had a motion to move the vote. I see no one else wants to discuss, so we don't really need to take a vote on that. I have received a petition from five voters present, same voters as last time, that the Article 2 be taken by secret written ballot in accordance with state laws. So if you would now, using the same super-organized approach that we had last time, file yourselves to the supervisors of the checklist, pick up the card, and deposit behalf of the card that you wish to vote into the ballot box. Selectman Tom Dubreal, the town has lost confidence in his ability to perform in his role as a Dalton selectman for reasons regarding some or all of the following. Selectman Tom Dubreal is routinely unprepared to comprehend, discuss, or vote on the town's business at select board meetings. When Selectman Tom Dubreal has accepted responsibility to follow up or take action on town business, Dubreal routinely fails to deliver a result. Selectman Tom Dubreal risks significant legal expenses to the town by refusing to respond and/or delaying response to legal right-to-know requests. Selectman Tom Dubreal routinely abstains from voting on motions before the select board. Selectman Tom Dubreal championed the replacement of the town's legal firm with a new legal firm that quickly exceeded the town's annual budget for legal expenses addressing his issues. So with that, we can start accepting the votes. Thank you. The ballot box is closed. We'll begin counting. The two of you need to get harvested. Ladies and gentlemen, Article 2 passes. Yeses are 93, and noes are 84. And with that, this meeting... Just making sure nobody said anything. With that, that concludes the special town meeting. We'll see you here again on March 11th for the regular town meeting. Please drive carefully.